Good evening, I'm Pam Sawyer for Selectmen. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, for the regular meeting in person and virtual at the Town Hall. At this time, I'll ask everyone, please rise to speak the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to speak at public comment, and we're thrilled to have this many people here and hopefully this many voices. I would ask that you keep your remarks to two to three minutes, and that in our procedure, the board does not respond back at this point, but we take down everything that you say, and then the board will decide as of for a future meeting if it will go on to the agenda as an agenda item, or if it would go to a subcommittee. So that's a part of the process. At this time, then, I would invite anyone to come forward to speak on an issue that they feel is important to they, their family, or their community. Please come forward. Say your name and where you live.
Jamie Freeman, Free Dairy Drive. I have a clan here, and of course, if they want to come up and contribute, just make it brief. We live at Free Dairy Drive, the ladies live at James, I need to keep them. Sweetie, too. Jake Mott lives across the street, and then Bill, or Mike and Becky live at Four Dairy Drive, all in the same similar proximity to Hebron Road. We moved here over the last year, maybe back to the traffic stop sign at the intersection of Hebron and Webster. And initially, I think we came with some great excitement over it's a traffic control, and it would be better for our community and our local area. Over the year, we have noticed actually an increase in safety hazards, and all of our quality of life has kind of depreciated, and that stems from unsafe conditions where a lot of people are not stopping either electively or they've not seen the stop sign. And there's a fear of hazard collisions on a regular basis, as well as, for whatever reason, there's some large excitement when people have engines, particularly loud modular vehicles and/or heavy trucks. And when they do stop or come to a really stop.
I have to, one ask is, would you step forward a little bit and just speak a little bit louder? I've got no response that they have a hard to give you.
Lots of traffic concerns, not stopping at the stop sign, concerning for recruiting stop signs on Webster that was always there. So now there is a concern for people thinking that people on Hebron Avenue are going to stop, and seeing repeatedly that they don't, that they're being exposed to that. And a lot of the quality of peaceful living in a rural area there has declined on all of us, and that's why we're all here, because the noise has increased. The trucks, I don't know what excites people to do such a noise, but as soon as they stop or come to a stop sign, they rev their engines, and it's very, very loud, kind of making it not peaceful to be outside. So between the safety and the noise, I think all of us in the local area are not really as excited about the stop sign as it once was when it first came up. Being runners on the road there, there's often, obviously, foot traffic is concerning because of the stop signs, as well as Bill and Carol live at a driveway. Now, it's maybe a test of a while between their driveway and the stop sign. So if someone traveling north on East Street does not have a car in front of them, they pull out safely out of their driveway, they come to a stop, that car does not see that someone is ahead of them, not knowing so, and they could easily be rear-ended very quickly, assuming that everyone else stops at the stop sign. So we were just hoping that all applications that stop sign gets reevaluated and possibly removed to make the peacefulness return.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Who else would like to address the same issue? We'll go, we'll use that issue. Anybody else want to speak on it? Come on up. But Jeff, speak loudly, and there's your mic.
Little lady, waiting to Hebron Road. The ladies who did in 1973. Yes, and it's a nice storm coming. We've been there a long time. The other stop signs on Hebron Road, up the road, are very useful because they control traffic. These, this, this stop sign, these stop signs around Webster Lane do not control traffic. They were put in for the express purpose of controlling speed. That was their intent. They have not done it, and as a matter of fact, they have created an environment that is less, like, less safe. And so, because the unpredictability, unpredictability of the traffic that is moving back and forth. Some people stop. I was out there tonight bringing the trash down to the driveway, the end of the driveway, and in that, and then that brief amount of time, two people came up from Hebron, and went drilling right through there without ever even slowing down, two people, in the course of less than five minutes. So these stop signs are not having the integral effect. Because it's a T, it's not a traffic problem per se. It's, they were put in to stop the speeding, and it doesn't work. And it's dangerous. I've seen cases where they stop in front of Jake's house and gun it, and they're going 50 miles an hour by the time they get to my driveway. Where that never used to happen. And because the sightlines are good, the sightlines are good, you can see, because there's no, there's no way you can't see. So this business about trying to control speed with those, those signs right there, it just is not working.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the stop sign? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Mike Sheehan, I'm at Four Dairy Drive in Fulton. Some of this is repetitive to what they said. Last summer, when we were over at the Freemans, we're sitting in the backyard, and we're watching the stop sign for about 20 minutes, and between 20 and 25 cars approached and went through the sign. I might say about three of them did a legal stop. Knowing that we were coming here tonight, the other day, I did the same thing again, with the same exact, three, maybe four, and 25 cars came to what I would call a legal stop. What you guys did here in town with the speed limit going from 40 to 35, I was trying to keep my speed at the right speed. That little sign there that clinks and tells you you're going too fast, that slows me down, it stops me every time. It's a quick reminder, and that might be a nice option for over there. But the stop signs just aren't working. So hopefully, and along with the noise factor, it's out of control. So hopefully, you can make an adjustment.
Thank you. Thank you. Randy and Mrs. Freeman, is there any others that would like to speak on this issue? Bring something, anything new to the table? Very good. Mr. Lorsch, do you have something to say this evening, sir?
Yeah, the same old story. Here's your attendance chart.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jim Lorsch, Brookfield Road. There's an article in the Hartford Current on Friday about a new town hall in Farmington. I shared, shared these articles with the Mr. Rupert and Mrs. Sawyer. Here's two more copies to use. I'm a strong believer that the town of Bolton needs a new town hall. And it's, I think, as I've said in the past, the functionality of this town hall is kind of come to an end. There's much more you can do to it, if broken or anything else. So I, I am saying that I think it would be a very wise move to construct a new town hall down at the old elementary school on Knott's Road. You're going to demolish half of the new town hall in the footprint of the old school there, and make it bigger, better, whatever way you want it. You know, it's multiple stories, or whatever a designer would have. And it's my old soapbox, and you'll find here it again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for the particle. Mrs. Hall, would you like to say anything?
No, I didn't just hear. Go ahead, Jim. I love this town hall. I really do. I love seeing you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to stay. Do you have something else you'd like to add?
May I add something?
As long as it's not addressing.
No. I'd say, don't be embarrassed if you want to leave, as meaning goes on. Okay, I'm just, I'm just telling you, because I've been on that side.
This is not being projected, so feel free to walk right in front of the screen. It's not a problem.
Just one question again. What are you going to do in response to what we did here today? No, I guess one of them.
The board, the board will decide whether or not to put it on another agenda item for our full board meeting, or it may send it to a subcommittee first for review and study.
Would that be published after the following?
Yes, it would be, because we publish all our agendas.
It's a timeline.
It depends what we put it on.
If it goes to the Facilities and Public Safety Committee, we are looking to schedule a meeting with them in the next month. Otherwise, it would probably wait till the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting in, in June, which should be at the beginning of June.
The first Tuesday in June is our regular meetings, and you're always welcome. The sun's out later, you can stay up a little later, have, it's, it's live theater. It's good to come.
That's for yourself.
This whole stop signs stuff, residents would never have told. This was going to be done, it just all of a sudden. Remember when they looked this, we knew. Stop sign.
So Mr. Ready just said, because I'm sure it wasn't picked up, that the residents weren't notified that the stop signs were going in.
It was still working, so that we would have a chance to come up and say.
Respond. Well, it was done before my term, so.
No, it wasn't. We did, we did it, this, this board did it, and it was on the agenda twice. We discussed it.
I apologize.
This, this board made the decision.
I remember.
And we discussed it at more than, right, right. And we, and, you know, again, we're, and I'm not engaging right now, but we did, if you, if, if those of you who were there would remember, we actually debated whether or not we were going to include that particular intersection. We knew the focus was on the other two intersections, but we felt that by adding it to that intersection at the same time, that it would help people to slow down and not develop speed from the town line all the way up. And so it, it was the topic of public discussion at more than one Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I extend the invitation for the next board of our house. I'm just, and then we can watch traffic as we do stats. It's a good time.
Thank you.
It's one thing where you theorize what would happen.
I'll ask you.
Thank you. No, I don't want to have to shut up, not you.
Please come forward and.
If I say, and I'm at 275 Hebron Road.
And you mean again.
Jake, Ma. I would be more inclined to having a state trooper sit somewhere and actually enforce the speed more than trying to get people to stop. If, if you're not going to enforce the speed limit, there's no way you can enforce people stopping at those stop signs. If, when it gets dark out, there is maybe 10% of the traffic going through there actually stop at that stop sign. Everybody rounds the corner going on to Webster, and 90% of the traffic doesn't even stop at that stop sign at night. And I, ever since that stopped, those stop signs were placed there, I've seen three, four times, people almost getting car accidents because of people not stopping at those stop signs. Oh.
Thank you.
And I'm Bill Freeman from Free Dairy. I'm sorry, so I'm retired law enforcement, so I could just reiterate the fact that I don't think that the stop signs are going to serve a purpose there. They just don't work, the officers aren't going to be out there enforcing it. I do believe Mike is correct. Speed sign would be the best.
Thank you.
I said it publicly.
Everywhere I see one, I almost cut my speed. Because I'm probably always going a little too fast, but both those things, they trigger me.
Thank you all. I did receive an email from Bill Freeman a couple of weeks ago, and I did reach out to him, and we had a discussion, and I said, if this is of interest, please come and talk to the board. So thank you very much for coming actively.
Thank you for informing us.
Thank you all. Come again next month.
Good, good to see you.
Lost your volume, Pam.
Everybody's leaving.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll resume here in just a minute.
I apologize for being late, but my invite went to spam. So.
Well, we're glad you found it.
I hit, the last one was from Kathy, I hit that one, that's why I kept trying to send me to an old meeting.
Yeah, this one came from Sue Ellen.
Yep, yeah, I found it. I have to make sure that she doesn't go to spam anymore, so I'll have to change that.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for joining.
Not a problem. And.
Thanks, Michael, as.
Just, just to, that previous discussion was about the stop sign at Webster Lane?
Yes.
We're not discussing it at this time?
Oh, I know, I just wanted to be sure, because we, we did discuss it a lot. Okay, no, I'm just curious, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. I do have before us, though, a, a letter from Carol Ready at 280 to Hebron Road, and she has observations of the stop sign. She has times observed, and she has results, and she has conclusions from her efforts on creating a, an actual report of incidences. So I will give that to the town administrator to add to the informational pieces on this particular issue. Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for coming. It was, it's always, I think, very positive when we have community involvement, and we're always glad to have you in front of us, so please come. We're going to move on, then, to the approval of the minutes, April 4th, the regular meeting. Is there any corrections or deletions or additions to April 4th for the regular? And yes. Mr. Teller.
What? Fluffy should be flurry.
Sorry.
That's a laugh. I saw it, too.
Not fluffy, but flurry.
Flurry with arts. Other than that, I didn't see.
Oh, that's, that's something to make everybody smile. Is there any other additions or corrections?
Board, because we have.
Hi, Linda, please.
Hi, Pam, I couldn't hear what Adam was saying at the beginning.
On, on page four, the second paragraph up from the bottom, second to last sentence, the word fluffy should be flurry.
A flurry of transfers?
Okay.
Thank you.
He is in the minutes, it's probably a type.
I'll move the adoption of the minutes as correct.
We have a motion on the table, do I have a second? Teller's seconds. Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously, will move on to April B, April 18th, the AP special meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to a fluffy moment?
I'll move the adoption as presented.
Bob Moore moves the adoption, and Mr. Teller's seconds. Is there any, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. We're going to move on to number four, appointments. And we have one addition. At this time, I would like to ask the board if you would accept opening the agenda for 4D to accept the resignation of Mr. Mark Altermat from his positions in town. Do I have a motion to open the agenda?
It's HR. Board of.
Zoning.
And town moderator. And I have a motion made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Aramita.
Yes, that's fine.
Correct, thank you. All right, and all in favor of opening the agenda and adding B? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So we will go at this time, and we will start with Cheryl Yudin. Would I, I'd have a motion to accept Cheryl Yudin's app, interest. She submitted a form of interest to becoming a member of the Alphabet Soup.
I'll also move, Cheryl has, has been a former member and a true contributor to the board. She'll be a true asset.
The, and that's the Water Pollution Control Authority. So Mr. Moore has made a motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Moore's motion to appoint Yudin to the Baltimore Pollution Control Authority.
Nice job. Mr. Teller's seconds. Mr. Mr. DePietro, did you want to add a comment?
No.
Thank you. Do I have any further comments other than her? We wish her well and with, and thank her for her volunteersome. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Moving on to B, Diane DiNunzio to Wall Street to be, she's interested in serving on the Wetlands Commission as an alternate. Do I have a motion to accept Diane DiNunzio?
I'll still move.
Mr. Moore makes the motion, do I have a second? Mike Aramita's seconds, thank you very much.
No problem.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to, but I would like to add that thank you to Diane for stepping forward and saying that she would be willing to serve on the inland wetlands as an alternate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously, thank you. At this time, I would ask someone else other than Mr. Moore to please make a motion to accept Robert Moore and James Rupert for reappointments.
Eastern Highlands Health District.
Thank you.
Jim, as the representative.
We don't have a motion on the table, hang on, huh?
Okay.
May I please have a motion to accept the, these?
So.
I think Bob DePietro had his hand up first to make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Aramita, Mr. Moore.
Just to clarify, Jim is the representative, I am the alternate, so you should.
So the motion would read, do I have your acceptance, Mr. DePietro, that, of that clarification, that Mr. Rupert is the?
Representative.
Representative, and Mr. Moore is the alternate.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Motion, thank you. Any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We're moving on, then, to 5A, new.
4D.
Oops.
4D.
4D that I wrote over to the side.
That we accept Mr. Altermat's resignation as ZBA member and town meeting moderator.
Linda, could you hear that?
And that.
And not really, and can someone spell that person's last?
That we accept Mr. Altermat's resignations as town meeting moderator and ZBA member.
Thank you, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Aramita's seconds, and discussion. I would like to add, at this time, a very special thank you for all of his service to the town. He has been nominated by the governor to take a seat on the Superior Court as a judge, and we're honored to have now another member of our community to serve in that august body. We have a board member whose father was a judge in that, in that court, and he has served for many years, and also as a referee, is that correct? Trial judge referee, Mr. Teller's father. And so we're honored to have someone else from town after Mr. Teller, Mr. Solomon, and now Mr. Altermat. I'm not leaving out anybody, am I? So at this time, I'd like to, we have a motion and a second on the table, and with gratitude, we'd like to accept the resignation of Mr. Mark Altermat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, it passes unanimously with regret. Now we'll go on to five, thank you, Adam, for that catch. To act and consider on request for money for the temporary building commission. Jim?
Well, they put together solicitations for design build, and they have asked the Board of Selectmen to consider an act on two amounts, one in the amount of $50,000 for securing professional engineering and architectural services, and then $99,000 for the design build team solicitations. I did communicate with the chairman that I thought that the Board of Selectmen would probably be putting this on hold, since the, the goal right now is to create a master plan for the fire department, which may, may have a significant impact on what a, a new addition to the fire department would look like. I did get a response from Mr. Scala that said, you know, until the Board of Selectmen acts and appropriates funding, they're going to suspend any further action or meetings toward these efforts.
Do I have questions for, for Mr. Rupert?
Just, um.
Yes, sir.
I, I think that, that, that would be appropriate at this time. We don't, we don't, we don't, we do not want to go forward to develop a plan when we don't know what we really want. And until we've completed that study and we get a proper analysis of our needs for the fire department for, and we're thinking ahead, we're thinking 10, 20 years out. It would not be fiscally wise to spend money on a set of plans. It probably would have to be totally redone. So with that in mind, I would just respond back. This time, we are not going to, we have a, a plan in place. That's my comment.
Mr. Teller?
Yeah, I would just add to that, that at our last tri board meeting, we took a sort of straw poll in a temperature of, I think there were at least 15 people in the room, of what the town's priority building projects were going to be. And the firehouse was not within the top three. And, and as, even, even before we had a discussion about a strategic plan for the fire department. So now that we've had that discussion and decided to move forward with this strategic plan for the fire department, I just don't think it makes any sense to spend money on that plan. That is the fire, the firehouse plan, until we really, what's the way to meet them? What the best way to meet them is, and I, I completely agree with Bob. It's just premature, we, we just can't, we certainly can't spend $150,000 in a budget year like this, where we're struggling. So, so I just feel like we've got a table. we're struggling. So, so I just feel like we've got to table this. And I, and I feel very badly that we've sent a group of people off to work on this for almost a year. And now they've gotten to a point where they want, and I apologize to them wholeheartedly. I think it was just a mistake. But it is what it is. We better not just spend the money and then get scoriated for spending it and then have it sit on a shelf because we can't do anything yet.
One of the changes for those that are listening that happened was the fire, Bolton Fire Department came forward and had a discussion, had a bit of a discussion and brought to our attention that they are looking at a concern of an aging fire department of volunteers not having enough people to serve perhaps during the daytime hours when, when a call would come in. Nighttime doesn't seem to be the issue, but daytime is because so many people are working out of town. And should we look at having some full-time employees for daytime? If that's the case, then that changes the needs at the firehouse for office space, response space, and other, perhaps even overnight space. So I'm very grateful to those people that volunteered and served on the commission and their work will be staying with us and we will ask them at a future point, I hope, to come back and, and continue on when we're at a next point. Any other, oh, Bob DePietro?
Well, I certainly concur with Mr. Moore and Mr. Teller. Also want to make sure that we continue to encourage the long-term strategy plan. And we have to also think about what we'll do with the delivery anticipated of the new truck, which might come as soon as what, August, March?
Yeah, August, September, Bob, somewhere in there.
We have to think about that too. So maybe for the future, might be an agenda. I just don't want to err, things to get postponed too long.
Thank you, Bob. Mike Aramita?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree that if we're going to go forward with a master plan, we probably should do that first. I have some serious concerns because the town rarely follows a plan that they develop. And as I heard in the last meeting or two, this is a different board. That board had a different idea. And I see us spending $35,000 on a plan and a new board two years down the road saying, well, we didn't think of that. We didn't do it and we're not going to do it. So I have some serious concerns about long-range planning, which should be one of the top concerns of the town is long-range planning, but we don't seem to even, when we do it, we don't seem to follow it. So that's a, a big concern to me. The other concern is the safety in that building. And right now it is a, it is an accident waiting to happen where somebody gets pinched between two trucks or somebody backs into, you know, in the first place, a drive-through station, the idea behind a drive-through firehouse is that you don't have to back up. And it's especially important in a volunteer organization where there might only be one person on that truck. So there's nobody to guide them backwards. We built a drive-through station and we put trucks going out both sides, which defeated the purpose of a drive-through station. That station should have never been built the way it was with double deep bays. When you build a drive-through station, you build it the length of the ladder truck, for example, and everybody comes in the back and goes out the front. And that eliminates the biggest, the, the biggest cause of firefighter deaths and injuries outside of firefighting is getting run over by the truck and injured by the truck. And most times it's backing up. And, you know, at nighttime and, and all those. So we have a station that was poorly designed in 1987 and remains poorly designed and undersized as it is today. You know, as Adam said, that's, that's not even one of the top three for the people in town. And I know people come to the board every month lately and talk about the town hall, which was on the agenda in 1990 when I was on the Board of Selectmen way back then. And we, we put a plan together to develop a town hall. And as other plans come and go, this one went, go. And I'm just concerned that this is going to become a lost issue. And, you know, like I said, it's a safety issue today. It was a safety issue yesterday. And it'll be a safety issue tomorrow till we deal with it. And I, I don't want to be the one that says I told you so when it happens.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else have further comment? Hearing none. I do not believe that we need action at this time. Do you think, Adam, the table?
Public Building Commission, what we're doing. Do we want to take a vote?
Mr. Teller, would you like the floor?
I move that we communicate with the Public Building Commission that we believe that this project needs to be put on hold until the, until a strategic, strategic plan is developed for the fire department.
And do I have a second?
Yes.
Bob Moore, seconds. Any further comment? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michael?
No.
Four yeses and one no, Mr. Aramita. Thank you. Moving on to B, consider an act on amending the capital budget on behalf of the Board of Education at the May 16th, 2023 annual town meeting. Mr. Rupert?
Well, the Board of Education had some leftover bond monies in 2017. And those monies, if you recall, because these are actions that have come before this board, you've taken action to reallocate those monies in the capital budget for them to be able to use them for a fireproof stage curtain, cafeteria, kitchen stove, energy management system and lockers to the extent that the remaining funds are available. As of July 1st, that money will have gone stale. So in order to keep this money in the capital budget for those purposes, it requires action at a town meeting. So if the board so wishes, we have amended the call for the annual town meeting and the resolutions for the town meeting to include that ask.
Are there any questions for Jim before a motion is put before us?
Make the motion first, then I'll comment on it. I'll make a motion to do as Jim recommended.
Thank you. And a second?
No.
Mr. Teller, seconds. Further comment? Mike Aramita?
Yeah, yeah, just to, to comment on the stage curtain for, for one thing that's been in there. That was a recommendation, how many years now, Jim, from the Fire Marshal's Office?
Four or five years.
Right. It, it's been, it was one of those things we're going to do next year kind of thing. And it's been at least four or five years. And in, in order for them to use the stage in the way they do, that curtain needs to be replaced because it was in bad shape when it was first identified by the Fire Marshal. So just in that one item, I, I, I believe we should move forward with this.
Thank you. Mr. DePietro? You're good. Okay. Any, any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to C, to act, to consider an act on the call and resolutions for the annual town meeting. So we've just had a motion to amend the call. But I believe we would need a motion to accept the one that is before us as amended.
Yep, we better do that and the resolutions. And I will tell you that the resolution page has been changed because we found a mistake in it. It had the wrong fiscal year in it. So it's been corrected.
And so it'd have to have item number five be resolved. No, it's kind of. Is number four the correct?
Or is?
The resolution, item two.
Has been corrected.
Is the fiscal year 23, 24.
Number four?
That's fine.
Correct in both. Oh, I think number four is a little confusing. It really should have made it clear to authorizing the rollover of existing funds. It's not quite clear to that, but I guess it's okay.
You don't think the word remaining funds works?
I would have wanted to hear something that talked about authorizing that they, authorizing that existing available funds continue to be available.
I will tell you that we took this language from the last action that the board made.
They were happy with it. If the bond people were happy with it.
Do I have a motion then? Put before us to accept the call and the resolution.
Move that we approve the call of the annual meeting and the accompanying resolution for the 16th, 2022.
Do I have a second? Bob Moore, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
We should all sign one copy or you should all sign one copy and we'll catch up with Mike and Bob.
We'll ask the Bob and Mike.
We'll handle it.
Thank you. Appreciate that effort. So at this time, we're going to look at D, to consider an act on give back of unused funding from 2022 to 2023. Jim?
Well, Jill and I have worked on this and we've identified $85,000 in specific areas that we believe we can give back. You have that list. It's 25,000 from the administration budget, 3,000 from finance, 25,000 from unemployment comp, 4,912, which is leftover money from the firefighter retention after we've paid this year's bill. 11,312 from workers comp, 5,358 from health insurance, 2,000 from mileage stipends and reimbursements, 318 from probate, $100 from animal control, 5,000 from Fire Marshal payroll, 3,000 from temporary building commission. And we're asking that you leave it up to our discretion to find an additional $15,000 so that we can appropriate a give back of 100,000 even.
Questions for Jim?
No.
Adam, Bob?
No, I. Yeah, I think that we should let the Board of Finance know the amount so they can count it, put it, put that into their calculations as they go forward. Like, it's like any other time, these are the best information we have at this time. Things change in the future and you never know what the next month or two is going to bring. But appreciate Jim putting this together. And I would move that we authorize that, now, it's not an authorization. We notify the Board of Finance that we would be returning in unexpendited.
And give the town and give the town administrator the leeway to find additional 15,000.
Would you accept that as amended motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DePietro, would you like to second the motion?
Sure.
As amended? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Adam, you're also. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to E, act and consider on approving taking $350 out of the Founder's Day Fund for the Veterans Commission to pay for Sergeant Michael Clark's memorial plaque that will be placed on the bench out at what I refer to as Memorial Garden on the Green. He is, he passed away in a very tragic accident while serving on duty with a lightning strike last July. And the board had already approved for this plaque. It has been deemed by the Veterans Commission under the leadership of Kathy Walsh, but also under the additional expertise of Barry Sterns, former Polackman, who has an expertise in plaques. And they've decided to go with a bronze one, so it will have a very long life and will be carved into the bench. May I have a motion to accept the expenditure?
So move.
Second.
Bob Moore makes the motion. Adam Teller, seconds. Mr. Aramita, thirds. Any comment on, on this?
No.
I would, I would make a comment that once placed, we will have a, a special dedication for the family alone. Unless I hear an objection so that they can have a private time. And then we will do an official dedication at the Memorial Day Observance at the town green. Thank you. Then I would ask for the vote. If there are any further comments, I don't see any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Act and consider number F, on the use of town vehicles using Notch Road at 384. This is an issue that was brought up by Mr. Aramita and we've had a couple of discussions on it. And we moved forward with an ask to the town attorney and which in your packet, it says five F, there is a letter from Michael St. Kane, Royster and Barker, or two-page letter regarding this issue. Michael, would you like to open the discussion?
I just, you know, I've, I've, it's, it's been a, I won't say it's a pet peeve. It's a very grave concern of mine and it has been for quite a while. And I've gotten it, we've put it into the new guidelines at the fire department. To the same extent, extent that Jim did here, that it would be a guideline and not a standing absolute 100% policy because there may come a day when we have to do it because of unforeseen circumstance. But I think that not using that by all town vehicles, school buses, town trucks, tractors, fire apparatus. And I, I would even make it a recommendation to everybody that lives in this town not to do that just because that is a situation that someday is going to be horrendous. And, you know, we have quite a few accidents in that area to begin with and it, it just scares crap out of me. I'm sorry to say it that way, but it, it scares me to death that people pull out of there and what comes around the corner. And the, the state's idea of putting smaller signs to make the people think the end of the highway is a, a rural road just was a laughing suggestion by them. And until they redesign that intersection in some way that we can be safe coming out of there, I, I strongly recommend that we go forward with a, a guideline against it.
Sorry, I skipped right over Mr. Rupert. Mr. Rupert, would you like to address the issue?
I think Mike summed it up pretty well. Yep.
Adam, do you have a comment?
I agree, we should have a guideline. I think we should just board it carefully. And I think we should just authorize the town administrator to issue that as a, as a guideline to all town employees. So I prepared the motion to that effect, but.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Unless anybody else has a comment.
Well, we can have a discussion once you make the motion.
Move that we authorize the town administrator to issue a guideline to all town employees not to use, instructing them not to use the entrance to Route 384, Route 6 and 44 from Notch Road unless there is no other reasonably feasible alternative or there is an emergency situation.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Aramita, seconds. I would ask for further discussion. Mr. DePietro? I would ask for further discussion. Mr. DePietro?
Yeah. Did you say it would be a guideline, it would be in there. Asking all employees to sign a guideline and put it in their personnel folder?
No, I don't think they need to do that. I just want to, I want them to issue some kind of a memorandum or an instruction to all of them. Not to use it. I don't know that they need to sign it. Extensive process, I think. And just make that, make everyone aware of that and maybe post it in the appropriate. You know, the places where vehicles are used or where people who drive vehicles for the town are used. Just reminding them not to do it. I don't know. I mean, I think creating a policy where people have to sign off on this one thing. Where does that end? Then every personnel folder is going to get awfully wide. Certainly more. I don't know that you need to create that record keeping obligation is what I'm saying.
I hear you. I hear you, but I'm just wondering where the accountability. Well, I hardly know that all employees will have, will hear this.
I would, I would recommend that the town administrator hold a meeting. To announce it and to make sure that every employee is aware of it, including Eastern Highland District. Those that use our office rarely, but have a vehicle that is parked here as well, reaching out to even the extended. Shared services employees. Would that make you comfortable, Bob?
Much better. Thank you.
Jim? Thank you. All right. Hearing any, no further discussion. At this time, I would call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, it passes unanimously.
Thank you all. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your thoughts about safety and concern for our town employees as well. Moving on to G, consider an act on the request of the Farm Commission for Anzaldi to fill in the manure pit. At the farm. Get into a. A farming question. This is a, a town piece of property and it was something that was decided because it is, has. Historical nature, not the usual historical nature that we talk about, but. The Farm Commission. Would like to allow Anzaldi to fill in the manure pit at the farm. Is there any question? Mike, are you?
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that there was no conventional septic system for the home. On that property and the piping actually went into the manure pit. And if that is the case and we fill it in, what are we doing?
Well.
Mr. Moore would like to floor.
Mike, I, you're right. It did not have a conventional. A, let me rephrase that.
Engineered.
An engineered system, thank you, but they did have a system and unfortunately it was.
Suspect?
Well, it was a septic system. It did not flow, it did not flow out into the, into the pit. There was actually a buried stone and. In a septic tank of some type. Quite old, maybe effective back in the thirties. That taught you.
Be careful, the thirties of this century are coming up real quick.
Mr. Armita, I'd rather you not call us all old at the moment. We can bring that up.
It won't be long with any luck. We're going to be talking about the thirties in a different century, but.
Linda, that doesn't necessarily have to go into the meeting.
So if I do have, I do have a question.
Mr. Moore?
It's, it's a former manure pit and they're looking to. If they're going to do some filling, I think it should be done. Under the supervision of buildings and grounds so that we don't create a. An area we're going to pull, water pooling and. And create a, an issue that. We have a problem. With the rain in the crappy soil, we have proper drainage around that area.
Is this going to be a contractor cost or is this, I mean.
That's my.
Mr. Rupert?
And what kind of filler?
My next question.
I mean, is this clean fill? Is it?
Mr. Rupert have the floor?
So let me address Mr. Moore's comment first, which was. Having it under the supervision of the building and grounds supervisor, it would be. And he and I had a discussion about it. Prior to this meeting because I wanted to be sure that I understood what the true ask was. And that, you know, they couldn't just go there and dump material in because it has a concrete bottom. And it has concrete walls. Those are going to have to be broken up. Because we don't want something that's just going to create a mud bit. And without, you know, appropriate drainage, that's what would happen. So he said, you know, he agrees that that, those things would definitely have to happen. My understanding from discussions with Arlene Fiano is that this would be at no cost. This is something that Anzaldi is willing to do for the Farm Commission as a donation. We have not had specific discussions about what type of fill it would be.
Would you like this, would the board prefer to have the. Town administrator come back at the next meeting and. Give us some more information on who would break up the concrete and other. Questions to be answered?
That was my question. Can the town crew use the tractor backhoe to break it up or is it going to be something an excavator is going to have to come in for?
And Adam had a question as well.
Well, I think it's been covered by what Jim said and we have to know what. He's got, somebody's got to know what the fill's going to be and where it's coming from. And that would presumably be our buildings and grounds.
Mr. DePietro?
Yeah, well, those were all questions I had. Also, why now? Come on, why didn't it come before?
Do you have the answer to that, Mr. Rupert?
I can't answer that, sorry. I don't, I don't know why. I'm guessing. Bob, that there's been a discussion that's happened between some members of the Farm Commission and. The Anzaldis and they said that they'd be happy to do this for them.
My, Mike, if I were to wager a guess, Bob, I would think that perhaps it has something to do with the upcoming. Encampment, Revolutionary War encampment that is slated for the fall. To be held at the farm and they may want to use the space for something else. And if they fill the pit, but that is only a guess on my part. I have not heard that from anybody on the Farm Commission. Would you like us to wait then until the next month and we'll get some more information, Bob?
Personally, I would. Because the manure pit may have other benefits. I don't know.
All right, then at this time, if there's consensus, we will. Is there consensus of the board to table this until the next meeting and we'll get some more information?
Yes, and yeah, and I would ask at that time that if Jim would. Bring forth a plan for us to look at as to what, what exactly. Is really going to happen. As you did mention, remove the concrete. Is it going to be removed? Is it going to be crushed left on site and things like that? It's kind of important because if we're going to do it, we don't, it's not something that. We. We do and then we have to redo.
Question.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I forget exactly what the conceptual plan that the Farm Commission came to us. For this particular portion of the farm, but was there some plan to put something?
My recollection is that would be the location of the pavilion.
That's what.
What outside.
And I mean, on one hand, if it's a concrete tank now, it's dangerous. It shouldn't be filled in or crushed and gotten rid of. It means there's no purpose. And on the second thing, I assume they have some thinking that. They could then go to the next step of building on top of it. So that's something that. Buildings and grounds needs to look at because if the thought is they're going to put a pavilion on that. I assume that means a concrete slab. That's going to have to have support underneath it that isn't.
Right, it would have, it would have to be compacted and lifts. And it has to be compactable soil, you know, really couldn't be, you know, just. Any, any fill. It's got to, got to be some decent fill.
I'm not even sure. I mean, could it be broken up concrete topped with fill? I guess if the concrete was broken up enough.
The facilities. Committee will be meeting and we will add this to that agenda. And we will come, that subcommittee will come back to the board and we will get some of that information. Good points, Adam.
Just, I do want to say that I wouldn't want to discourage that idea because it sounds like the right thing to do. And I'm not saying that it's not the right thing to do. I'm just saying the devil being in the details, they ought to think before they weep.
Thank you to the Anzaldis for their offer. It was a very good one.
It's the right thing to do. We just want to do it, right?
Right.
And we'll get some more information. Thank you, Jimmy.
Yes.
Thank you. Ongoing business. Do you have something? Jim, do you want to add?
No.
Do you want to? Oh, it's further down. Okay, Grant. Okay. I'm moving on to seven then. Reports and updates, properties and facilities report. Nothing at this time. But you will be meeting shortly. And then I will move on then to the. FY twenty-two budget report. Are there any comments?
You have the tax collection and summary report as well as expenses that are pretty close up to date. Still no overarching concerns.
There's nothing that really. Jumps out. We know that different costs we've gone over before that stand out that are highlighted. That would be. Board of Finance, the assessor, the elections, the waste collection, all have. I've been highlighted, but we've all, we've all addressed those issues in the past. We know why they are highlighted. Is there any further questions that we can answer? Hearing none, we will move on. We'll move on then to the budget transfers. Which I believe we do need.
Yes, this, we need action on each of these.
We have a highway, a seven C.
I think they're, I think they're all highway. So what we're doing here is we have several transfers that we're. Asking the board to select and to consider and hopefully act on for us this evening. We are trying to use funding that is currently in the highway budget. To cover paving of Shoddy Mill Road. We are out of money in the paving budget. The cost of paving this year was extraordinary. And one of the reasons that we're trying to use up the funding that's here is that we're trying to preserve. The money that we have in Town Aid Road so that when we are successful in getting a grant application. For the Lyman Road Bridge, we can use those funds that we have in Town Aid Road. Cover our cost, our, our cost share portion of a grant for that bridge.
At this time, I would accept a motion to transfer nineteen thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. And a second twenty thousand. From the various categories moved to the category of road repair. I would accept a motion.
Also move with the. Jim summarized it very well. The, the. Rise in cost of pavement in the year was astronomical. And obviously it's an item that we had planned on some increase, but nothing like that. And to complete the job, fortunately, we have the funds available. And. And it's the old story. If we don't do it today. That whatever amount is, is going to be up another fifteen, twenty percent this year. We're, we're not in a. Very good situation to not do it.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Is there any seconds? Further discussion?
Discussion.
Mike?
Yeah, Jim, is this work going to take place before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, milling is, milling is scheduled to take place on or about May eleventh. And the catch basins have already been, the catch basin tops have already been replaced and paving. Somewhere around the eighteenth, nineteenth, and I did send. An email to the chief this afternoon so that the fire department would be aware. That there might be some activity there on the road during the middle of May.
So this is going to be in addition to paving they'll be doing in the summer?
Yes.
So it, it, it's a totally separate, they're going to.
Right, this will be done in this fiscal year.
Okay, all right.
And what portion of the road from, from Hebron Road to where?
I believe to the town line.
Any further discussion?
There is still money. Yeah, this money won't get us to the town line, so there must be money still left in road repairs.
Yeah, I think there's, there's some, there's some, and we also, I was, there were several small transfers that I was able to make. You know, with, with the discretion that the board of selectmen gave me. So those small transfers have already occurred.
Hearing no further discussion. I would call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, Adam? Yes, he did. He voted yes. Mr. Teller abstains. Four yeses and one abstention by Mr. Teller. Moving on then to the AP report. You've all had a chance to look at it. Are there any questions that we can answer before we call for a motion?
Young question I have.
Yes, Mr. DePietro?
Yes, is the consultant fee of about ten thousand for diversity training, was that? An RFP? Or what? How is that?
The, the diversity trainer was an RFP through the Capital Region Council of Governments. And they, we did get a couple of other prices. They were by far the least expensive. By about a thousand dollars a session. So it's, it's, you know, we could, we can, through the, through the Capital Region Council of Government Purchasing Council. We can count that as being akin to the state bid list. And so that's what we did.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
And further questions? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to accept the AP report as presented. Bob DePietro moves and Mr. Moore seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to the first selectment report, I actually had the. Pushed the discussion forward when we looked at five E on approving the funds for it, so we will consider that. Completed. At this time. We will move on then to the Administrative Officers Report. The monthly report is before you. Jim, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
I think there's a couple of things I'd like to highlight and a couple of things have come up. Since I, you know, generated the report that I'd like to share. You know, we are in a really good position this year with salt and sand. But we had. Our, our former highway foreman had an agreement to purchase about a hundred and twenty more. Tons of salt for this fiscal year. And we have to purchase that, you know, it's like our fuel when we have an option to buy fuel oil. We have to pay for that whether or not we actually receive the material. We're able to squeeze in about sixty more tons of salt in our existing salt shed. But I've actually worked with the town administrator from the town of Andover. I'd like to publicly thank the town of Andover. They have space in their salt shed and we're going to purchase that additional sixty tons of salt. Which will be stored in Andover Salt Shed until next year. So that we actually have the product. It'll be stored next door and it'll be the first salt that we use at the beginning. Of next, next year, which will put us in a really great place to start next fiscal year. With, with salt and sand. So that's one of the things that I've worked on during the course of the last month. I received an official notice today that Attorney Barker is moving from. Michaelson Kane, Royster and Barker to Halloran and Sage. And this board will have to make a decision between now and June first. Whether or not they would like our files to remain with Attorney Barker and be transferred. To Halloran and Sage. In my conversations with Attorney Barker, our rates will not change. And that we. And that, uh, we, we, Halloran and Sage, we, I believe would be, uh, a firm that has professionals available to us in areas of land use and other matters that are of a uh, i- it's an area of expertise for several of the members of their law firm, and it might provide us access to some of those individuals. So, th- this is something that the board is gonna have to think about and act on. Uh, prior to June first, I'll have to, uh, respond to the, the email and letter that was mailed out to us today. You don't have to do that tonight, but certainly we'll probably put it on for the next AP meeting. I also received an email yesterday that we were not fortunate enough to get the DEP grant for the parking area for the Nathan Hale Greenway. So that, that, uh, that grant application, um, did not get approved on our behalf. Uh, they said that there was about, I think, thirty million dollars in asks with a nine million dollar budget. And it seemed, reading between the lines in that letter, it seemed like a lot of the money was gonna be going to improvements in state parks rather than funding smaller projects at this time. So we'll be looking for other opportunities to move that, uh, forward potentially. Um, Selectmen Sawyer and myself also recently had a meeting with, uh, an individual from Senator Murphy's office, um, and we had some good things that came out of that meeting. We talked about what our challenges are, and I, I gotta tell you, I've had a flurry of emails since then with um, ideas for trying to help us find solutions to the things that we are looking at as our, um, as the issues that we're trying to wrestle with today with regard to, you know, a new roof on the school and building of a town hall. And we talked about the teardown of Notch Road, and in particular with the teardown of Notch Road, they suggested that we meet with, uh, a group called Yukon TAB, and I for the life of me, I can't at this moment remember what the TAB acronym stands for. But I did have that meeting, uh, on Monday with a representative from Yukon. And although they, they did confirm that this building would not be eligible for Brownfields Grant for teardown, one of the things that they've offered to be able to help us on is to look a little more deeply into our hazardous materials report and see if, you know, some abatement can be done rather than tear the building down and treat it all as hazardous waste, which may save some money on the project. The other thing that they've offered to be able to help us with is to reimagine the use of that space, whether it be for a new town hall, whether it be for senior housing, whether it be for, uh, a green space or a community center. Those are things that they thought they could guide us through an exercise to help us with as we plan how to reuse that space in the future. Uh, and, and she did tell me that they would even, uh, you know, provide some drawings, renderings that might help us convey to the public, you know, what, you know, the board is thinking the future of that space may be. Uh, so, you know, we're gonna continue talking with them and meeting with them. But that truly, um, was a, a pretty productive meeting. Uh, with that, I think that, you know, kinda wraps up some of the major highlights in the meeting, unless anybody's got some questions. Diversity training started today, there's two sessions tomorrow, there's a daytime session and an evening session. We had pretty good turnout today with town staff.
Um, and the only other thing I thought of to add is that we have hired someone at the senior center for the program, at part-time program coordinator, receptionist, and coordinator.
That's correct.
So we have another new staff member on board, and we're pleased that that is filled and, uh, be able to take the relief off of Carrie for the pressure that she had, the extra job she had taken on, and we all know that discussion we had and some very great points that Adam made, uh, about the importance for seniors. Um, this is, I think, a necessary and a, uh, will be, uh, she will be a lovely addition to, to the, uh, family of town staff. Uh, anything else, Mr. Rupert?
We, the, the Talon Micro Transit Grant update is that Talon has decided after a lot of work and, um, checking into this, that it, it just, that they've decided not to move forward with the grant application. Um, you know, they were gonna apply for the grant um, for all of our Talon County region, um, and, and we did have a quick meeting about it. They talked about the fact that there's just, there's too many unknowns, um, and that they just really didn't have the horsepower to get this done before the grant deadline, so they have decided that they will not be moving forward with that grant application. And the only other, the only other thing I have, uh, for the consideration of the Board of Selectmen, I had a conversation with the chief earlier this month, uh, the, the fire department has applied for a grant, I believe in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. That's a reimbursement, those reimbursement funds normally go directly into the, um, town's general fund, uh, and the fire department would like to have use of those funds, so they would ask that when those funds come in, that they be deposited back into the fire department account, which is not part of our normal accounting procedures, so that would require action by the Board of Selectmen.
Any recommendations?
Just a, a question.
Uh, Mr. Mark?
The request, the, the funds that would go into the current hot, uh, fire department town funds, right, not?
Correct, the, the.
Not, not the, the fire department ink fund.
Right, the, 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 right, it would go into the town fire department funds, the chief has said that he would like to move to continue to move forward with purchasing SCBA bottles.
That is an issue that's been brought before the board in the past, and the discussion and action of the board was to have them buy them in smaller allotments instead of a one-time purchase. Twenty-four of them, if I remember correctly. Uh, there are quite a few of them, uh, because they're aging out, and, um, uh, if the board would like, we can put this on as an agenda item for the, uh, next AP meeting. So you can have time to think about it. Would that be, I think, that's the board members that will talk about it again at, at the Tuesday, the sixteenth meeting?
We authorize them to apply for the grant?
Yes.
Yes. Jim?
We did.
Yeah.
I don't think we should vote on this.
Mr.? I thank you for that, that was my thought also. Mr. Aramita?
Yeah, the, uh, just to give a little history to it, the grant was a, a, it's a twenty-five hundred dollar matching funds grant. And when we approved it, I remember Bob said, you know, uh, we can take the, the matching funds out of the operating budget. And it, it's a great idea, and it, and it would be, but unfortunately, the, to get to twenty-five hundred, we, the fire department had to spend twenty-five hundred dollars of funds that would not have normally gone for that purpose. And it's, it, it was money that needed to be spent, but it, the it, it got taken away from some other, uh, priority in order to be spent, rather than the town, uh, allocating an additional twenty-five hundred for the matching grant, like it did with the rescue, uh, the forestry truck, where the town came up with the additional six thousand. I- it's just a, uh, it's just the, the nature of the matching funds grants, it, it, sometimes it gets a little screwed up like this. And, uh, I, I understand what he's trying to do, and it's to make sure that we don't have to spend tons all in one shot with the airbag, uh, air bottles. So, it, it makes, I, I, I've discussed it with him, and it, and it does make sense, even for somebody like me to, it's, it did, did make good sense that, to put the money back in so that they could, he could spend the money on air bottles.
Thank you, uh, Mr. DePietro, did you have a further comment? No, Mr. Mark?
We're, we're gonna be bringing it up again at the, at the AP meeting. Just a suggestion, and when you bring that up, would you also, w- we should put it in a partic- particular category, not just, you know, if we're gonna transfer.
I, I can ask the chief what category he wants it in.
Well, goes into the proper category, if you took money out of a category, I'm assuming it won't.
Right, I, I believe that's exactly what he wants to do, Bob.
Very good, no further action is needed on that then? Uh, anything else?
That's all I have unless there's questions for me.
Uh, I'll move with your.
Can I, can I ask one quick question?
One moment, please, one moment. We have highlighted at the bottom of our paper.
Oh.
Very clearly, we have some, one more job to do here, Mr. Aramita.
Can I ask a question about something on the agenda before we move to that?
Yes, your question, sir.
Uh, uh, under Jim's report, the last thing, updated alcohol insurance policy and other liability through KERMA. Which insurance, uh, alcohol policy are we talking?
We, we have an insurance policy that we can offer to people to purchase through KERMA um, when they wanna use alcohol at Herrick Park, which is one place that's been designated.
Okay. I just wanted to know if that was what we were talking about.
Yeah, it's, it's a new, it's a, it's an updated policy, uh, that people can purchase through, through the town, through KERMA.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yep, just, just checking to see if that's what it was. Sorry, Pam, your turn.
That's right, that's, that's time for clarification. Would you all look at your calendars, please? Uh, and on the sixteenth, is it Tuesday? Uh, is there a morning time that you could all step in for, it looks like a meeting with maybe three items? Uh, transfers and the discussion of the twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, as well as the AP.
Okay. Pardon my yawn.
As early as possible, Mr. DePietro, would you like to comment? Mr. Teller would like it to be as early as possible, Mr. DePietro.
No comments.
Yeah, I would kinda concur, early as possible, please.
Uh, I, Mr., Mr. Aramita?
Yeah, it, if, I, I'm kind of going into a project that's gonna take the majority of my days for the rest of the month, and, uh, if we were to do it at like a seven o'clock meeting or something like that, prior to work hours, I might be available, but short of that, I probably won't be.
I can do that.
Seven AM?
Sure.
Well, I think, that Mr. Teller.
No, no, I mean, early is early, but that's a little.
Uh, we, we have to be respectful that we will need a clerk, a clerk for, for it and our, our.
Well, we can, that, that meeting, we can always, uh, generate minutes from the recording.
Eight thirty-nine, I can do either of those.
Okay.
Is eight thirty?
I can do either one, you, with, whatever works.
Is eight thirty good? Mr. Aramita, does that help you out?
It, it may, but I can't guarantee it, unfortunately. I'll do my best to be there as, like I said.
All right, if you all pencil in eight thirty, that would be good.
If it's raining, I'm available.
Okay.
We need a date then also, and a time for the ad hoc meeting, uh, regarding the veterans tax, which includes the two Bobs and Mike Aramita.
Well, Mike, what's your work? A lot of working on your schedule.
Uh, I, I really don't know, I've got a, uh, I'm, I'm putting a second story on a house, and I, uh, and I'm, uh, I'm kind of at the weather's whim right now, and, uh.
You, you think within a week or so, you might have a better idea?
I hope so.
Maybe, um, Jim, we get back to you with, uh.
We said, could we, could we set a date and then we will hold the time? So we can get it on the calendar?
Wanna move it further out, like?
Could we hit, could we hit the first week in June? That's still before our next meeting.
So, June begins on
Thursday.
Thursday, the first, obviously, and our next board meeting is on the sixth.
I'm available, I'm not, uh, I'm available Thursday in the afternoon and anytime Friday.
I, I can probably do that.
June first, are you saying June first?
June first or second, I hope I'm done with putting a roof on something by then.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have the veterans. And, huh, one. Jim, we got that?
Yep, I wrote it down.
You're supplying coffee, right?
For one o'clock in the afternoon?
No, for the morning.
For the morning, by eight thirty?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll swing by your house with the coffee?
No.
Uh, uh, we will see if, that we can make coffee. Uh, facility, uh, facilities, public safety meeting, uh, date and time for Jim, Adam, and Bob.
So, I think, my recollection, so we had to cancel our meeting with the registrar voters. And I think they wanted a Monday evening. Um, and I can double check with them.
You are correct.
But preferably if we can do this one on a Monday evening at seven, probably just do it as a Zoom meeting. Um, we, because we've, we need to meet with the, our, uh, registrar voters. But we've got to talk about lake, lake rates and potential opening dates, and a, a further discussion on filling in of the manure pit. It's a great agenda.
Duh, smell.
You know, and I'll have to, if we pick a date, I'll have to confirm with the registrar voters.
Can't do the fifteenth, but I, the twenty-second.
Is that?
Yep.
The twenty-second is
Twenty-second.
Is our day of referendum?
No, twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third.
I'm sorry, did you say twenty-second?
Well, you were talking about Mondays, so.
Yeah, cuz I remember that being a specific request for their schedule.
That if it's Monday, those are the.
They're gonna be going crazy, getting set up for the referendum.
Yeah, it's probably not good for that. Probably needs to be a week later.
Okay, then, uh, then that would be the twenty-ninth, which I could do, which is Memorial Day.
Right, the town hall's closed?
Guess not gonna work.
The next Monday.
When, and they could have another referendum on sixth. You want, you want me to talk with them and then get, get back to you guys by email?
Yes.
Yeah, let me, let me see what they have, let me see what they have, yeah. Yeah, let me see what they have, and I'll send an email out, uh, to, to the members of this committee.
Then also, uh, just one last closing piece, Memorial Day, since it was brought up, uh, we are having the parade at ten o'clock. We asked the selectmen, would you please, um, honor our veterans, uh, I mean, uh, those that have passed for memorial, in memorial, uh, that have served our country and marched in our parade, um, or ride in our parade. Uh, we would love to see you there, lineup is at.
Nine kickoff at nine thirty.
Lineup is at nine thirty kickoff, walking is at ten. And, um.
I got it close. That's right.
Anything else I can have, uh, answer, no questions for that. Um, hearing none, uh, thank you all for this meeting tonight, and
I'll move with your.
We have a motion, second by Mr. Teller, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your hard work, and thank you to Jim Rupert for all of this, and for putting this together.